The roll please.
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Here.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Gamache.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
First item is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. There a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we have review of checks issued from Finance and Central Services and from Human Services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Then we have the approval of the minutes from the July 27th County Board Meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. We have one item today under Chair's remarks. And if you've been to a license center anywhere in Minnesota recently, you may have experienced longer than normal wait times. That's because the state of Minnesota recently launched a new computer software system referred to as MinLARs. It stands for Minnesota Licensing and Registration System. And clearly, as we've seen, and as very frustrated customers can attest to, MinLARs still has quite a few bugs to work out. And I'd like to call on John Von Delindy, Division Manager for Anoka County Parks and Community Services Division, to give us an update on the current situation with MinLARs and how we're responding. John?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the County Board. One of my privileges as Division Manager is working with the fine supervisors and staff who oversee and operate our five license centers and two passport centers here in Anoka County. Our staff are passionate about their jobs and seek to provide the best possible service to the thousands of citizens who visit our license centers for a variety of services every day. As Commissioner Silveraja mentioned, the Minnesota Driver and Vehicle Services Division launched their new MinLARs computer system on Tuesday, July 25th. The system went live at all 174 license centers statewide. And like ours, all license centers are now linked directly into the new MinLARs computer system and must use it for all computer transactions related to vehicle licensing and titling. Unfortunately, after nearly 10 years in the design process, the state's new computer system is plagued with defects. This is causing problems in providing accurate and timely service to our customers, and I'll give you just a few examples. Our staff are having difficulty closing out daily reports. The system is charging erroneous fees. I experienced that myself last week. Fees are not being processed, the system is timing out too quickly, there is absence of any inventory tracking method, we have invalid inventory piling up daily before reuse, the system lacks any method to correct input errors, and many transactions that we used to do now have to be done by the state, so we have to defer our customers over to the state to complete the work that they come in requesting from our staff. So this situation obviously has left our staff weary and frustrated, almost to the point of tears in some cases. In most circumstances, our supervisors are helpless to assist our staff in resolving these problems because there's systemic errors in the system. Our customers have been extremely patient, fortunately, but are understandably growing increasingly irritated with the never-ending confusion and errors and delays that they're experiencing. And again, I want to emphasize for the record here that these problems are not the fault of Anoka County or our dedicated staff. So how has Anoka County been involved? Well, the Minnesota Deputy Registars Association, also known as the MDRA, which Anoka County is a member, has been warning the state for years that the MinLARs system would not be ready for launch. In fact, a letter from the MDRA president to the Commissioner of Public Safety on January 23rd outlined grave misgivings regarding the absence of some critical components within the MinLARs system when it was under development. Then on July 29th, the MDRA issued another letter to the Department of Public Safety, which said in part, and I just wanted to quote this, what's in the letter, "We find it extremely disconcerting that during the intervening period after January 23rd, when DVS postponed the MinLARs launch to correct what they described as identified critical defects, none of our previous concerns were addressed in advance of implementation and continued to remain unresolved." On January 27th, which was two days after system launch, a delegation of 10 deputy registrars from county, city, and private DMVs met with the Department of Public Safety Commissioner Monodoman to document our frustrations and to plead for her intervention to address the MinLARs breakdown. Today is exactly two weeks after the system was launched at our license centers and all centers statewide, and frankly, there has been almost no resolution to the issues that I just outlined for you. So needless to say, all of the DVS offices around the state are very upset with the current situation. We're not alone in this. I know you've heard about this in the media and on the news and so forth. The Anoka County team and our wonderful staff are now trying to do whatever they can, anything that they control to manage the problem, and to assist our customers. So one of the things we're doing is just trying to keep things as customer-friendly as possible, especially since the wait times have increased. So we now have an ambassador working in the lobby to explain the situation to customers as they come in, to help with their questions and help them organize their paperwork. And if we're not able to help with their needs because of a known system glitch, we let them know that from the start, so they don't stand there for a half hour, hour, hour and a half, get up to the window and find out, no, you gotta go to the state now to have them do this. For the most part, we've had a manager or other staff circulating behind the counter of clerks to try to jump in and assist where they can. There have been some workarounds that have been introduced by the state that are somewhat cumbersome, but our staff are trying to work through some of those workarounds, and we assist where we can. We've also tried to expedite the simpler transactions and have focused one person on driver's licenses and TAB renewals at each center. The driver's license piece is not part of the new system yet, so those that come in for driver's license renewals, we can still expedite that service. Beyond this, our leadership team has put in place additional financial protocols. We have had meetings between the Finance Division, Internal Auditor, and our division to work out ways that we can ensure complete accuracy in our daily receiving closeouts and reporting to the state. Over the weekend, we learned that the House Select Committee on Technology and Responsive Government has launched a web form to collect information on the issues that Minnesotans are experiencing at the license centers, and we are providing that form to customers so that they can voice their opinions back to the state and keep those folks down at the state, House Select Committee informed on many of the issues that we're dealing with. In conclusion, I do want our customers and citizens to know that we are doing everything in our power to manage the system to the best of our ability. We completely understand that this is frustrating for everyone involved. The county will continue to work with the Minnesota Deputy Registars Association, and we will continue to put pressure on the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, and we are also strateging remedial efforts through our legislative delegation. Hopefully, through these efforts, we can get the state to rectify these problems in a timely manner. We look forward to giving our customers the full scope of excellent service that they've come to deserve and expect at all of our license centers. And I want to thank you, Commissioners, for listening. I am joined by Brad Fields, who's the Director of our Recycling and Resource Solutions and License Bureau Services, and also Paula Anderson, who is our Anoka County License Bureau Manager in the event that you might have any questions for them. They're the technical experts and would be happy to respond. So thank you again for listening and appreciate your ongoing support in these troubled times. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the Board? Commissioner Cordiak.
I have to comment, Madam Chair, and I almost shouldn't because this whole discussion angers me, quite frankly. I mean, this is, when I have been listening for years to the motor vehicle, planning on ruling out this fantastic new system of theirs, and after years of whatever they've done, I mean, I was presented at a budget meeting we had with our License Bureau staff, who were so frustrated and worked so dedicatedly with their staff, I got two pages of 22 topical areas that don't work properly in this system. I mean, I've been watching Anoka County roll stuff out in our IT department for years and years, and when we do, it works. I mean, the property tax, which is 10,000 things, works when we turn the switch on. And you do not introduce this thing unless you thoroughly test it, and they have not. I'm looking at the second document that the staff also presented. They have three pages here of workarounds that they have had to invent to figure out, how did you get around the system that's sitting before them, just so they can get the business of the public done? And when I was in the Columbia License Bureau the other day, and it's normally busy, trust me, it was packed wall to wall, from end to end, front to back, every chair, every ticket. They were so busy, I'm sure every one of our other locations looked similar. It's just a very sad thing what we've done to the citizens of Anoka County, in my estimation. I greatly appreciate, Paula, your staff, and John, and others who worked so hard to make this work, and what particularly gravelled me, though I did not read it, was that the state had pointed out that the problem was untrained staff were implementing this system. Now, that really gored my ox, trust me. So I think that we may be forwarding a letter maybe to the editor, hopefully to the Commissioner of Motor Vehicle Services, or whoever else is entitled to it, but being Anoka County and Minnesota, we're working closely with the state to rectify these problems, and they should get fixed quickly, not like we did with MinSure, when we're still unraveling that two and a half years later, which was another outrageous state-introduced platform. I mean, that was, I sat in Human Services for years, listening to the sobbing of the persons on the staff and directors about what was going on. So I hope they learn how to run an IT department, a little bit better than having at least those two examples, but this is a weak example. I appreciate, Paula, all that you and your staff are doing, and hopefully they'll rectify the problems for our citizens. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Cordiak. Appreciate your passion because it really does impact our staff and the services that are provided within Anoka County. Commissioner Look.
Madam Chair, thank you. John, I appreciate you starting off with the fact that we have quality staff, and I appreciate the fact that you've identified very clearly that it's not Anoka County's fault. And I think our staff should be commended because they do have a tough job, and they do have a great presence, I think, to the public. And for this to be now placed upon them and have to deal with public's frustration and try and navigate through that, I think is above and beyond the call of duty, so I want to publicly thank the staff for these troubles that we're seeing here. And I appreciate Commissioner Cordiak's passion, too, because you're right, MinSure, just recently, the Department of Revenue coming out with the C-TIB information, the sales tax, I mean, screwing it up, you know, from the get-go. And these people are professionals, I'm assuming. They're certainly being paid professional wages, and the minimum expectation is a professional outcome. And that's certainly short of where this is coming, and unfortunately, it brings disrepute upon us, it brings disrepute upon government, and it solidifies a lack of trust with the public in what government can do when you show just how incompetent you can be. And so, is this surprising? Not to me. And unfortunately, I don't know how much this cost to make, I'm sure it was absolutely extremely expensive. And unfortunately, we did not get, as public, that is, citizens of Minnesota, we did not get value on this, and I'm just, I'm very disappointed, but thank you for the information, and again, thank you, staff, for the frustration you're enduring here, so.
Other comments? Commissioner West?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, an example that was given of what the response was from St. Paul, they would have a transaction that was rounded up a dollar, and when they called about it, they were said, "Well, just don't worry about it, it's only a dollar." And, you know, I haven't had very many, any calls, I should say, and I give our staff in the license centers credit for that, because most people, I'm sure, are just really frustrated, but I think the response of our employees helps them to understand. And so, I'm really happy that we have that kind of employee, and it's nice not to get the calls.
Commissioner Schulte.
Madam Chair, thank you. I won't reiterate the comments that have been said about the ineptitude of the platform and the program that was delivered via MinIT, but I would like to go off on a little bit of a tangent and thank our staff for being so deeply involved in their Deputy Registars Association. They're the ones who knew about the problems years ago and have been attempting to get Minnesota IT to fix those problems before implementation. And that's important. I mean, those trade associations that we belong to, those groups that we dedicate our staff time to and energy to, they do a lot towards getting this kind of thing fixed. And for some reason, Minnesota's IT Division is not paying attention to those associations. And I think that's where the disconnect was here, because all of this could have been fixed ahead of time. It may not have been released for another six months, or four months, or whatever it may be, but it's been working okay, the old system. In fact, that's the other comment I want to make quickly, is we have made great strides in our license centers to become more and more efficient, to become customer-friendly, to electronically check people in, to shorten wait times. We've made such great strides, and then to have this poke in the eye by the new MinLARs system is tough for our employees, because I think morale was growing fast within our license centers, and I think this, by no doing of our own, I think it sets back our employee morale in those divisions. And I would implore Mr. Von Delindy, Mr. Fields, and everybody else at the license centers to make sure they know that their elected county board is truly admirable of their service and the work that they do, and we know that you'll bring it back to where it was as soon as we can get this system rectified. But don't let the morale fall, even though it's inevitable. Try and keep them happy, even though they're dealing with upset customers.
Commissioner Gamache.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to reiterate, being there last week at the Ramsey Center and watching the folks work so hard, and they still have smiles on their faces for most of the time, and they're really working hard to make sure that they're serving the public. And John, I know with a slip of the tongue, but I think you called them frustimers, they're like frustrated customers. But you guys are doing a heck of a job, and just to, you know, whenever you do a new system, and IT people can talk about it all, there's always going to be small bugs, usually. It's not usually the whole system crashes, or the whole thing goes down, or no one can do what they're supposed to do, but what usually happens is those that have put the piece into place stand up and take responsibility for the fact that they have a problem. And I haven't seen the state really do that. As Commissioner Cordiak mentioned, they blamed training. Well, if you have a Windows-based operation, it shouldn't take you much time to train people to do that. And apparently, they just have not taken responsibility for their own failures, and that's too bad, because it does fall upon all of the people outside the different counties all across the state that are doing that, and it's not a good service, so. But thanks to the people that are working there day after day, I didn't see too many frustrated customers, so that was kind of nice that day we were there. So I think just being able to tell them what's happening, what's going on, the consumer will accept that if they know ahead of time. Thank you.
I'll just comment last, the last I heard, from 30% of transactions aren't getting completed yet, this story isn't over. These things that aren't getting done, aren't getting done, and they're still not done two weeks later.
Well, earlier in the legislative session, this last session, I happened to be in the office of one of the legislative staff who actually deals with these issues, and he was just talking about how they knew that the system was not ready, yet staff from the Department of Public Safety came and testified and talked about that the system was going to be ready, and that there just weren't the issues that they were hearing about, and literally, the very next day or two after they testified saying that, you know, there weren't going to be issues, lo and behold, there was an email sent out to all of the deputy registers throughout the state of Minnesota, saying that there were some glitches and some problems they were running into. So, you know, bringing the system up that clearly was not ready for primetime, as Commissioner Schulte said, wait a few more months. Heck, we've been waiting for 10 years, what's a few more months? And, you know, I see my folks from Human Services sitting here, and it's déjà vu, isn't it, when it comes to, it's MinSure all over again. The exact same things that happened within MinSure, we were certainly told that those items would be addressed pretty rapidly, and I think that even legislative staff in communicating with them, they had originally said, you know, they're saying they're going to be on it, give us the weekend, and lo and behold, Monday, nothing had been done, nothing had changed at all. And so, unfortunately, we have customers who are, they're not due for a license plate for another year, but the only way that they can truly get out of the license center is to pay their extra six bucks for their new plate, even though they're not due for a plate. And so, there's certainly a lot of frustration out there, and rightfully so. And, you know, hopefully, as Commissioner Gamache said, the state will step up and take responsibility for the true lack of transparency and honesty in what's wrong with this whole system. So, you know, again, our staff continue to do the very best job they can to provide a very high level of service, and we are very appreciative of each and every one of them, because I know it is very, very frustrating. When you are accustomed to providing great quality service and the system prevents you from being able to do that, it, you know, we should have a support group for the MinSure workers and the MinLARs workers, because you are experiencing exactly what the folks dealing with MinSure have been experiencing for the past few years, and it just is truly unacceptable. So, again, to our customers, we are doing the very best job we can in a very difficult situation, and we will continue to provide the high level of service to the best of our ability. And again, thank you, John, for sharing the information, and to our staff for your patience and your endurance. I think we are going to be in for a long ride, unfortunately, before the system is up to where it needs to be.
All right, well, that concludes Chair's remarks, and we will move on to committee reports. We'll start off with Management Committee Report. Commissioner West?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 1A is a restructuring replacement in the library. It's going from a grade six to a grade 10, that's what the restructure is. And that's going to offer higher technical services and just provide more for the needs of those folks. And then, B, I don't know if you want to take it together. That is a new position in Human Services. It's a project program coordinator, and this person will be an assistant to the Division Manager and the Directors.
Is there a motion to approve items 1A and B?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries, next item.
And the next item is Management Committee recommends adopting Resolution 2017M3. It's affirmative action in employment and equal opportunity policy statement.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
All offered.
Resolution has been offered. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
And Madam Chair, the rest is informational, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner West. Now we'll move on to Transportation Committee Report. Commissioner Schulte.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our Transportation Committee met on Monday, 31st of July, here in the Government Center, and we have four items, really three items, but it's listed as four. First, the Committee recommends approval of a negative declaration on a need for an environmental impact statement, and adopt the findings of fact and conclusions for the realignment of West Freeway Drive between 147th Avenue Northeast and Lake Drive in the city of Columbus.
Now, offer the resolution. Is there further discussion?
Just as a way of explanation for anyone that's wondering what a negative declaration for a need for EIS is, basically, it's saying that an environmental, not statement, but an environmental impact, what's the word?
Statement.
Okay, that's what's a negative declaration, but we did an environmental impact.
Oh, we did.
Analysis, or?
We did an environmental assessment.
Assessment. That's the other word I was looking for. We did the assessment, which tells us that we didn't need the EIS. So it's a much smaller, simpler process, and this is a resolution declaring that we don't need to do the EIS.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
And I think we'll put item two and three together. The Committee recommends approval to enter into a license agreement with Shamrock Investments for the use of county permanent easement for business signage and landscaping at 4700 Main Street and 4850 Main Street Northeast in the city of Fridley. This is essentially just to allow them to place some signage on an easement that Anoka County has. It's kind of a ponding area near two very large trucking firms off of Main Street, our County Road 102.
Correct.
Can I move it, Madam Chair?
So you're moving items two and three?
Two and three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
And lastly, the Committee recommends award of a contract to hard drives, the amount of $2,217,621.70 for the reconditioning project, East Main Street, from 7th Avenue to Roundlake Boulevard in the cities of Anoka and Coonville. And I would move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded by Commissioner Look. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Madam Chair, just under informational items, I want to bring up just a couple of things we talked about on corridor projects. Our Brunker Lake Boulevard project is coming along nicely. It looks like everything up there is on schedule, and the new pedestrian underpass is in place. The road's going to be open soon, and I think people will be very pleased with the project. And our Foley Boulevard project is coming along nicely. We're entering the complex part of the project where we're actually doing the intersection of Northdale and Foley, or 109th and Foley, but the Foley Boulevard part of it is done now, the asphalt's down, the curb's in, and things are going well on that project as well. So that's just a couple of quick updates, and if any questions for Mr. Fisher, feel free, otherwise, I think that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Right. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to Parks and Community Services Committee Report. Commissioner Cordiak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The two action items are pretty straightforward. I think I might ask Jeff to, they kind of weave a complicated tale a little bit, but they're pretty straightforward. If Mr. Perry assists us, maybe starting with item number one, the maintenance shop that we're busy constructing.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Jeff Perry, Park Planning and Resources Manager for Anoka County. This is a permit requirement through the Rice Creek Watershed District in order to receive the permit to construct the Rice Creek Chana Lakes Park Reserve Maintenance Support Facility. There are three parts, three different agreements associated with this one permit, so I'll just quickly go through each of the three agreements. The first one is the easement that grants the Rice Creek Watershed District and its authorized representatives the right in perpetuity to enter the easement area, to monitor, modify, and maintain the hydrology of the area and the vegetation of the area. So, the area is depicted on the map in front of you. It is approximately 34.8 acres. The next document is the Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, Anoka County Contract C005890. And essentially, this obligates the county to construct and maintain the stormwater management facilities on site. So there are two surface water infiltration basins where the water runs into, and it obligates the county to maintain and manage those in perpetuity. And then lastly, is the Wetland Buffer Maintenance Agreement. This is Anoka County Contract Number C005889, and this obligates the county to establish and maintain a vegetated wetland buffer and upland habitat in accordance with the site plans. So that area is depicted on the image in front of you in the crosshatched area. It's just shy of a- just shy of an acre. It's 0.94 acres. So that is a brief summary of each of the three agreements, again, required by the Rice Creek Watershed District to obtain the permit.
Madam Chair, that's one action item. Obviously, we have an interest and obligation to cooperate with Rice Creek Watershed District. We have no reason not to. So I would...
I'll move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
And, Jeff, I just have a question regarding, is this outside of what we normally see in these projects? This just seems, and maybe because it's all grouped together, it seems maybe a little excessive?
Yeah, Madam Chair, that's a great question. The Rice Creek Watershed District recently went through a rule review and adoption process. So these are different rule requirements from about 12 to 18 months ago. So these are essentially, they've been modified a little bit. You used to be able to get by with one combined agreement, and the district now has adopted rules that supports three different agreements as part of a permit process such as this.
So, just to follow up, the ultimate impact, is it similar when it was all in one agreement, or is it more excessive? And when it's three separate agreements, is it, does it mean that we have three separate permitting processes that we have to pay fees for?
Madam Chair, no, it's one permit fee, and it's the same process. It is a rule change that just requires additional documents. So there's no additional fees to the county.
Okay. So it's very similar to what we would have had to do in the past. It's just that it's broken into three different contracts rather than in one large contract?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you. Further discussion?
Those are good kids.
Hearing done. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamas.
Aye.
Commissioner Shulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordyak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Secondary, Madam Chair, and I'll just remind you, we're doing a major project at the Riverfront Park area. This, we're going to talk a little bit about a restoration piece that we have to do. Any help that we had the Mississippi Watershed District Management Organization step in and offer some assistance and some financial support. Jeff?
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Chair, members of the board, this is an excellent opportunity to provide greater water quality improvement associated with the Riverfront Redevelopment Project, primarily at the boat launch area. So Anoka County approached the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization with a grant application a few months back to look at some cost share assistance to build a project that enhances the water quality in terms of the runoff to the Mississippi River. The county was successful in receiving the grant. It's in the amount of $28,120. And essentially, what it's going to do is build a stormwater infiltration basin that will catch the runoff from the new boat launch that will be rebuilt, and then rebuild the outfall pipe and restore some of the stream bank adjacent to the boat launch area. So it's a great opportunity to, again, get some cost share dollars for the county to implement this project. And ultimately, the benefit to the public is a newly redeveloped boat launch, and the benefit to the river is enhanced water quality as a result of this project.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Shulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordyak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamas.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next?
All right. Madam Chair, the remaining items are for information purposes only. I will comment, tell your friends, where we are having our annual firewood sale, I think in Anoka County. Comment sales, much of all of what we have available. We spent a year cutting wood and preparing it for sale. So we'd like to think it's priced well and available for the public. They can see the website or talk to our Parks Department. We had a discussion about the passport services in their upcoming budget, which wasn't too eventful by itself. But we got into, elongated discussion about future driver's license, passports, e-passports, real I D. And I forget the other opportunities that you will have. We had a brief outline in our county newsletter, but I think everybody walked away, kind of scratched their head, wondering what the heck they're going to need to get out of town. So we'll, time will tell, and we'll figure it out during our next visit. Hopefully, the line won't be 50 people long when we get there. But that was an interesting discussion. We'll all have to anticipate that. And I think that the remaining ones are for information purposes only. Can I comment, though, that at the last meeting, there was a brief cheer and applause for, we were introduced to the fact that Anoka County broke the new monthly historic record at Bunker Beach. I forget the dollar amount, I think it was like $800,000 in a month's time. It was big. So we are doing very well. We thank the warm weather and our excellent staff and our various promotions that we're doing. Bunker Beach is alive and well. We thank them again for that. Lovely place to go. With that, Madam Chair, I don't think I have any other comment, and I conclude.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to Property Records and Taxation Report. Commissioner Cordyak.
Never, the fun never ends. I'm going to call upon a couple of people here. Alex is here today. He gave us an outline a little bit about working with the city contracts, which I know he's still working on. But this is an item regarding the Northtown Mall. We are there having a, we're engaging the tax courts. We recognize it's a very important discussion. It's one that we have, I expect that we feel that we do well assessing those properties. But we have to defend that. We have to defend it to support our interests, our bearing partners that are involved in the taxing jurisdiction there, and really in the metropolitan sense as well. So, Alex, what are we outlining here to support us in this discussion?
Commissioner Cordyak, members of the board, we do have a Northtown Mall petition, actually on two different separate payable years, 2016 payable 16 and payable 17. Payable 16 involves roughly $55 million worth of market value, and payable 17 deals with roughly $63 million of market value. With that, there comes a lot of tax capacity dollars that are affected as well, not only from a county standpoint, but from a city standpoint and school district as well. Our office, given the large magnitude, typically we handle most tax court cases in-house. However, the large size and complexity of this appraisal report, there's like nine parcels involved as well. The strip mall in front of the boy Northtown Mall, so there's lots of different pieces. We, our office, along with the attorney's office, would like to contract for professional services with Christopher Stockness, who is an appraiser with the Shenahan Group. They specialize in large tax court cases similar to this, as well as large retail appraisals. And part of that process is coming to you with this proposal for purchasing those services.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordyak.
Aye. Can't wait.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamas.
Aye.
Commissioner Shulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Alex. And Cindy Rayker is here to talk a little bit about the elections discussion. I think this is, once again, is pretty straightforward. This is a relationship that we've had multiple times, and look forward to enjoining it in this coming year with some of our school districts in the county. Cindy?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I have three more contracts that we're hoping for approval today. These are administrative contracts where the county elections office will administer elections on behalf of local jurisdictions. The three contracts that we have are Columbia Heights, School District 13, St. Francis, School District 15, and Forest Lake District 831. All of these elections will occur on November 7th, concurrent with other local and special elections that have already been scheduled. We have several, in fact, most of our residents will be going to the polls this fall. We already have contracts in several school districts, and it appears that we are going to have about 93 percent of our voters will be going to the polls for school district or city elections this year. So this is indeed the largest local election year that we have had in Anoka County that I can recall at any rate. The county will be administering about 42 of those precincts on behalf of school districts. We also have the cities of Lionel Lakes and Circle Pines that will be having their regular city elections, and there will be school district elections on that ballot as well in those cities.
Very good. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordyak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamas.
Aye.
Commissioner Shulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And, Madam Chair, the remaining items are for information purposes only. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the final item is to consider approving the liquor license application as reviewed by and consented to by the township, sheriff, and attorney. It is for the Stacy Lyons Club by Jerome Schroeder. It's a one-day-on-sale 3.2 malt liquor license, the township of Linwood, for September 30th, 2017. And just to let you know, the reason that we're doing this is because we do have to do this for townships. Cities can do this on their own, but since we have one township, that is why it is coming before us. So I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And if there's nothing else to come before the county board, meeting is adjourned.
Sorry, I was thinking of not listening. I almost stole you from here. We could have just traded.